Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Tuesday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Milton Select Board. We're convening at seven thirty-two PM. On July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Arthur Doyle. I'm serving as your Select Board Chair this year. And we will introduce the Select Board members with us. Richard, Secretary of the Select Board?
Good evening, Richard Wells, Secretary. I'm for the public by phone tonight.
Hello, my name's Roxanne Musto, I'm a member of the Select Board.
Thank you, Roxanne. Nick, could you introduce yourself, please?
Sir, Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator.
And Kevin. Kevin Freitag, Town Counsel, is with us as well this evening. Welcome, Kevin. And we're expecting Vice Chairman Zulus. Ah, here he is as we speak his name. And then Member Bradley to be joining us.
Good evening, Mike. Good evening, Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
And accordingly, because we're a Zoom meeting, all votes this evening will be taken by roll call. With the call to order behind us, would you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. America and to the Republic, which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty. And justice.
Thank you. At this time, we will, as is our tradition, open to a public comment. Public comment has a fifteen-minute set aside with each speaker allotted up to three minutes of time. And we thank and appreciate the courtesy when we serve everybody participate in public comment. Aaron, welcome. And remember, Aaron Bradley has joined us. We will go in the order of hands raised, and we see a hand raised by Sean Fahy. Mr. Fahy, we will promote you. And I should mention, anybody who is on the phone can raise their hand by hitting star nine to speak, to unmute, they would go to star six. And then to mute again, they would go to star six at the conclusion of their comments. Welcome, Sean. It's nice to have a member of the planning board with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Select Board. Thank you to Nick for allowing me to speak a little bit. Tonight, although I am a town meeting member in Precinct Nine, and as Chair Doyle said, I am a member of the Planning Board. I'm actually speaking tonight as a resident of the town of Milton and as a taxpayer. So from that standpoint, is the standpoint that I'd like to speak tonight. And the point that I wanted to address is a concern that I've had for a number of months. And I feel it's critically important to the town that we address it. And it is the cost implications that a town potentially will have as a result of the MBTA Communities Act if we should adopt it. My concern is that we need to perform some financial modeling to determine the services that we need to provide to support potentially what would be a twenty-five percent increase of housing units and what the resulting cost of that would be. I have some calculations that are based on readily available data using the warrant for two thousand and twenty-three. And really, nothing more, Chair Doyle, than a best effort at trying to establish what could be the cost that the town would incur. Given that I have a short amount of time, I'm going to try to do this quickly. And I would be happy to follow up, Chair Doyle, with a member, you or Nick, with some information that I have that I could provide for the Select Board or Nick to use to understand what calculations I have.
You're welcome, Nick, thank you.
Okay, terrific. You know, essentially, there's two categories. There's a revenue category, which we have to acknowledge, because if we added twenty-five percent in housing units, that would be two thousand four hundred and sixty-one units. And we also have to recognize that there will be costs that the town will incur, expenses largely driven by increasing the town population by a number that will probably be significant. And if we said that it was three persons per household, we have over seven thousand new residents to the town. So what I simply did was this, I took fifty Elliott Street and used fifty Elliott Street as the example for the tax revenue. And the tax bill for fifty Elliott Street is one hundred and seven thousand, one seventy-eight, divided by twenty-seven, it's thirty-nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars per unit. And if you multiplied it by two thousand four hundred and sixty-one new units, our tax revenue would be nine million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, zero seven six. So nine point eight million in tax revenue. If we said that we're going to have an increase of auto excise tax, which is a substantial revenue stream for the town. Right now, we have a four million dollar revenue stream through auto excise tax. If we're going to increase by twenty-five percent, let's roughly say twenty-five percent of an increase, we have a million in auto excise tax. So we have a revenue stream of ten million, seven sixty-nine, zero seven six, which is good. On the cost side, though, and what I did was I took the twenty-three warrants and I looked at each department. And I had some support with respect to this, by the way. I asked Rick Neely for some support. And as you all know, Rick Neely has a long record of serving the town, Chair of the Warrant Committee, Select Board Member, and a variety of other things that he's done. And he was terrific in providing some calculations for me. But if you took each of the departments, the police, the fire, inspectional services, public works, solid waste, schools, and even the smaller components, Blue Hills Regional, Consolidated Facilities, Library, Parks and Rec, Water Health, General Government, and then both benefits, health insurance and retirement. And what I did, Chair Doyle, was I used eighty percent of, let's call it the budget. So I will use police, for example. If we have an annual cost of eight million, one hundred and fifty, which is per the fiscal year twenty-three warrant, and we took eighty percent of that, because and the reason for eighty percent is some of the costs won't be duplicated. We obviously have a leadership team at the Police Department. We're not going to need another police chief. We're probably, we're hopefully not going to need another police station and so on and so forth. But so if we take eighty percent of the value and eighty percent of eight million, one fifty equals six million, five hundred and twenty, twenty-five percent of that would be one million, six hundred and thirty. In the interest of time, I won't go through each of the departments, but that was the model for how we calculated the cost that we could incur if we had a twenty-five percent increase of residences in the town. The total calculation of each of the departments is twenty-one million, six hundred and ninety-seven. So in a very simple form, there's twenty-one million, six hundred and ninety-seven in potential cost increase. There's ten million, seven hundred and sixty-nine, zero seven six in revenue. And what it means is that we have a shortfall. We have a shortfall for our budget of almost eleven million dollars. Now, that eleven million dollar shortfall does not consider any capital cost. So there's no debt service for capital expenses if we had to build any new facilities. And the potential is that we may have as many as a thousand new students, you know, that would be in the town if we increased our housing units by twenty-five percent. So obviously, we would have school construction costs and potentially other facility and cost, other infrastructure cost for our water, our sewer, our roadways. So the calculation of eleven million dollars as a budget shortfall doesn't consider any capital cost or any infrastructure cost at all. What we have an understanding of, that our benefit from the state funding that we would be able to maintain, the average over the last ten years is a hundred thousand dollars. That's what we've received in benefits from the state programs. So we have a substantial, substantial shortfall, which would be, quite honestly, very, very difficult for the taxpayers to absorb. If this, now, this math calculation may not be perfect. And obviously, Nick is our town administrator. He may say, well, I don't know if eighty percent is an appropriate calculation. Maybe he calculates sixty percent. But needless to say, whether it's sixty percent or eighty percent, and whether some of these calculations are slightly off, or even if they were off substantially, an eleven million dollar shortfall is, by these calculations, is incredibly significant. Potentially, it's less, but it's a very, very, very significant number. So I had hoped that by presenting my concerns as a resident and as a taxpayer to the Select Board, that we could potentially get some help from Nick. I know you all have a full slate, all of you do. I know Nick has a full slate. But my concern is that we need to do an analysis of this before we blindly adopt the MBTA Communities Act. So I think many residents in town probably don't have a strong enough awareness of the financial implications if we were to adopt the MBTA Communities Act and add twenty-five percent residents to the town. But it's a very serious financial matter, very serious. And while everyone in town that has a responsibility to address it within the boards are doing that, I feel it's incumbent upon our town administrator and the Select Board to consider a financial modeling analysis. So we could have a town perspective, not necessarily mine, but a town perspective of what the implications in terms of cost could be.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments and your recommendations.
Chair Doyle, I'd be happy to forward a document that you could share with whomever you feel is appropriate, and I'd be happy to do that tomorrow.
Please do, me most welcome.
As I said, if.
And please copy, Mr. Milano, if you would be willing to.
I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
And as I said, Rick Neely was instrumental in helping me through this analysis. So he said he would be available for any conversation if anyone would like to have one.
Sean, you could feel free sending that to all the Select Board members and Mr. Milano simultaneously.
Terrific, terrific. Okay, all right, terrific. Thanks very much. And by the way, I'd like to thank you all for your service. I appreciate the time, the commitment, the hours, and everything that you all do. And it does not go unnoticed by me as a resident. So thank you all very much.
And right back to you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Donahue. Kevin, to panelists?
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, thank you for joining us, Kevin.
Wonderful, thank you. So Kevin Donahue, two or three school streets. Like to take a moment and say Happy New Year to all of you. Given the recent developments with the potential acquisition of the Fontbonne property, I'd like to ask you all to act with deliberate haste to ensure that there is an article ready for the annual Spring Town Meeting in May that deals with the reallocation of the town-owned property on Gao Road, as it's been recently referred, for the purpose of building a new school. I understand that previously, a reversion clause was discussed where the parcel or parcels could revert to their prior designation. And it seems to me that if land were to rise, similar to the Fontbonne parcels that were deemed more appropriate, this would be an excellent opportunity for the parcels to revert to their prior use, assuming that such an article were to pass, and would permit a safeguard, so the school committee could continue to move forward yet remain open to potential new opportunities. And that's the extent of my comments. I want to say thank you, and again, Happy New Year.
Thank you, and the same to you. Appreciate your being with us, Kevin. Before we move on to item number four on the agenda, I would like to mention briefly that the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee will be joining us just prior to our going into executive session. And for those who noted the agenda with care, they and the Select Board will be meeting at one of the executive sessions. So return now to item number four, Discussion Approval, Second Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement by and between the Town of Milton and the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. Mr. Berkeley is with us, could we promote Mr. Berkeley? For those who may not know, Mr. Berkeley, he is the Director of Public Works for the Town of Milton. Chase, welcome, nice to have you with us again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and hello, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. So just a little background on this memorandum of agreement with the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. It was initially signed in two thousand thirteen, following a consent decree that the Boston Water and Sewer Commission filed with the EPA in the Department of Justice and the Conservation Law Foundation, which was the end result of a lawsuit brought upon against the city. And so essentially, it relates to our storm water system and how we abut the city of Boston. If you think about the way the Napa River flows through High Park and Matapan, on the other side of that is Milton for a good portion of it. And what it all boils down to really is that we'll be a good neighbor and a good partner in terms of promoting water quality. So things like sharing information with the Boston Water and Sewer Commission, particularly in places where we directly abut, so Beacon Street Circle and Beacon Street and High Park are physical abutments that have no water body in between them. So our pipes flow into theirs and their pipes flow into ours. And so, you know, in good faith, keep good housekeeping procedures and share records and share in the responsibility of any type of emergency response should there be a spill or an environmental issue that comes up. And so the way the memorandum was originally written was for a five-year period. We've extended it once in two thousand eighteen, and it's since again expired. So since the consent decree is still active for the city, they're requesting another five-year extension at this time, assuming that that will be perpetual until that consent decree expires. And we may go down a different path as far as memorializing our relationship. So that's it, in a nutshell, I'm happy to go into much more detail if you'd like or answer any questions. Just say the word.
I just had one, Chase, you mentioned a five-year extension. And I noted that the document reads execution until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six.
Oh, see, I'll have to check that, and maybe Mr. Freitag could comment on that. I thought it was a five-year.
We'll invite Kevin to do so, thank you. Could you join us, Mr. Freitag? And then we'll recognize Mr. Zulus.
No, it's all right.
Okay, that was a false wave, okay.
Kevin's probably got it.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
It was the Town Council. My understanding was that it was for five years. That's a script there in the agreement, I'm happy to fix that. It's.
Are we having difficulty hearing you, Kevin?
My understanding is that it was for years. If you simply want to note that in your vote tonight, that'd be fine, and I'll make the change before you sign it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berkeley or Mr. Freitag? Yes, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think what happened, it appears from the document that the term was extended through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. And so, I think it's probably, it probably lapsed December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. And so five years from December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one would be December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. So I think that's the, I think that's the five-year period.
Good, thank you for that, I see that in the third warehouse. So we're good. Mike, you're still recognized?
Yeah, and I just had one question, and I don't think we need to make the change. And maybe just for documents going forward with the city. We have an obligation under paragraph four of the original memorandum. This is going back, what the original was, was from two thousand and thirteen, right? We have the obligation to continue to perform our functions with respect to the Milton facilities, but there's no corresponding obligation for the city to perform its functions with respect to MS four, which is identified as their storm water. It's probably fine, because this relates to the consent decree, but just going forward, it's always nice to have them, having the other side, they have their obligations as well. So I don't think, I don't think we should not move forward with extending it, but I think just going forward, we just want to make sure that everyone has their obligations in the agreements.
Mr. Chair, I do have a quick comment on Mr. Zulus. So, Mr. Zulus, the reason for that may be because the Boston Water and Sewer Commission and the Boston Public Works Department are different entities. And so the Boston Water and Sewer Commission has no obligation to maintain roadways in the city, and it falls under the city of Boston.
Yeah, that's the roadways, but and that includes that what's defined as MS four in the agreement, which is the storm drainage systems.
No, so you're correct on that, so MS four is the storm water collection system, so yeah.
So, so, you know, just going forward, we just may say in agreements that they have their obligations, just as we have our obligations. It's a minor point, we shouldn't, I'm sorry I brought it up, but just going forward, we just want to think about that in our agreements.
Thank you, any further comment?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion for you, if you'd like.
Please, Mr. Wells.
So I'll move to approve the Second Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement by and between the Town of Milton, the Boston Water and Sewer Commission, and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for being with us. And your explanations and all of your service to the town.
Have a good night.
Night.
Item number five, Discussion Approval Memorandum of Understanding Between the Town of Milton and the Milton Residences for the Elderly Incorporated. Mr. Freitag, could we please say to you?
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, thank you, much clearer.
So this is in connection with a request that we've received, that the town received from the Milton Residents for the Elderly Incorporated, which is an order that runs the housing that is located at Uncrey House in Winter Valley. As you all know, Winter Valley is in the process of building a sixth building at their location. It's my understanding is part of that process, they're requesting from HUD. And in order to apply for that additional capital from HUD, they've asked us to to execute this memorandum of agreement, which basically affirms the fact that the council, through the Council on Aging, performs certain services to certain qualified individuals in Milton over the age of sixty-five, and that those services are available to the residents at Winter Valley Residence Two, which is constructed in Winter Valley. So just to be clear, it doesn't place the residents at this location in front of any other residents and for, but it does make clear that Milton does provide, through the Council on Aging, support services for individuals who include individuals that reside at Winter Valley. My understanding is that Sarah McLaren from Winter Valley is here, she's in the attendee pool, if any of you wanted to hear from her. I've, she and I, he was in agreement with all the proposal, proposed changes that I had made, but she may have something to share with you all.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Sarah McLaren is in the attendee pool, and let's promote her and see if Sarah would like to comment as well. Welcome, Sarah, it's good to have you with us.
Oops. Hi, Sarah McLaren, Executive Director for MRE. Thank you for reviewing our MOU, as you know, and was well stated. We are in the process of submitting a grant application to HUD for additional capital funds for our new building. In addition to that, with the capital funds comes unit subsidy, which is very valuable. And when HUD places funds like that into a community, they like to know that the residents will be supported through the town and various other organizations. So that is the genesis of the MOU, and I appreciate you reviewing it. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Let's see if there are any for either you or for Mr. Freitag, for members of the Select Board. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My quick question is, and it's more for Nick, and I'm not sure if he can answer this tonight. And if he can't, that's fine, because I'm willing to wait until we hear from this person. Has anyone heard from our COA Director, Christine, stand on her, where she is on this?
Mr. Freitag?
Yes, in response to that question, Mr. Wells, Christine Stanton actually forwarded this. And then she and I had some back and forth on the revisions to the agreement. It was originally to be signed, we changed that to the Select Board instead, because the council, you know, it's access, a part of the town, and it's important, I think, for this, on this MOU. She is, she's in the loop, she's aware of these changes, and was glad to be an opportunity to include her in that process.
That doesn't answer my question, does she support it? That's my big question.
I don't know if I can, I can't speak specifically to that. I don't think she said one way, but I know that she was involved in the process the whole way.
Nick, any idea whether or not, have you had any conversation with her about this?
No, I think Kevin categorized the conversation that we've had as, you know, she had spoken to Sarah about initially wanting to get guidance from legal counsel before approving it. And that's where Kevin and her and Sarah worked together to collaborate on the document, but that is before us. Like Kevin indicates, I did not ask her point blank, does she support it? But I took from the messaging and from the work together that she didn't have an issue with the document going forward.
Okay, I hope that's the case.
Any other questions? There's a related motion to be made on the floor.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Town of Milton and the Milton Residences for the Elderly, Inc., and authorize the town administrator to sign on the board's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus, is there a second to the motion, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto.
No.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said it was Ms. Bradley, not Ms. Musto, I beat her to the punch this time.
Oh, all right, okay. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you, one and all. Thank you. One and all.
Thank you very much.
Frames of, and we appreciate your being with us, Sarah.
Thanks very much.
Kevin, thank you for your support and this assistance as well. And I think I'm gonna ask that the frames for Erin and Roxanne be put together, so I can more easily see which hand goes up first on this screen. Next item is item number six, and this is discussion approval, Select Board letters of support or endorsement for applications before the Community Preservation Committee. And we have two this evening. One from Forbes House and one from the Conservation Commission. I spoke with Heidi Vaughn, and I don't see her in the attendee list, but I do see Mr. Cannon from the Conservation Commission. Since he is with us, why don't we promote him to a panelist, and then that could free him up for the evening, and then we'll go to the Forbes House. Welcome, Mr. Cannon, and for any viewers who are not familiar with John, he's the long-term Chair of the Milton Conservation Commission.
Good evening, and thank you very much, Mr. Doyle and members of the Select Board.
You have the floor, Mr. Cannon.
Wow, thank you very much, and thank you all for the opportunity to address the issue. The issue is that the Conservation Commission is seeking the support and endorsement of the Select Board for an application made to the CPA Committee for Funding for the purpose of designing, constructing, and installing a pedestrian bridge at the south end of Pope's Pond over the Pine Tree Brook inlet to the pond. That's the area that's adjacent to Canton Avenue and Sumner Street. The project would actually allow us to circumnavigate the pond. Some may recall that twenty some years ago, in two thousand and one and two thousand and two, the town, supported by the Northeastern University, American Society of Engineers, designed and built a bridge over Pine Tree Brook at the north side, that is closest to Madison Square, of Pope's Pond. And it's a beautiful area, it's a wonderful resource, and for above the last twenty years, a number of people have tried to complete the project, to complete the path, to circumnavigate the pond. So at this juncture, the Conservation Commission has made application for an amount of funding in the in the amount of total amount of one hundred and twenty five thousand. That amount is actually a supplement to the town meeting, which in June of two thousand and twenty endorsed a funding of one hundred thousand dollars at the request of the DPW. So in fact, this application for CPA funding comes from the town, the Conservation Commission, the DPW, and the Northeastern University, chapter of the American Society of Civil Engineers. Now, it also has the support, and I just received today from Kevin Crissom from Parks, the support of the Milton Park and Recreation Department and the support of the Board of Park Commissioners. And that was something that was requested, and they were enthusiastic in their support of this project. The project has really has three goals. The idea is to enhance the natural resource. It's to enhance the public access to the natural resource and to preserve open space, all of which fall within the the purview of the Community Preservation Act Committee. So I I'm here to just very briefly give you what the proposal is. There are three phases for the proposal. The first is to do the sort of the the initial design, which is a survey of the site. And that survey would also include the delineation of the wetlands, so we know exactly where to place the bridge. Though the reason for the importance of that is that the bridge's estimate is somewhere between twenty five and sixty feet. And obviously, that will have a cost component. So the first step, we're requesting sixteen thousand dollars from the CPA funding, which would be essentially fifteen thousand for the site survey and about a thousand dollars for the wetland delineation. And in reality, the town agent, Steve Ives, is going to do the wetland delineation. The money, the thousand dollars, is only for GIS support to actually place the flags onto the engineering plan. The second phase, in the approximate amount of a hundred thousand dollars, is to combine getting a a civil engineer to oversee the the design, the fabrication, the transportation, the installation. I've I've been working very closely with Chase Berkeley at DPW. He's given us the the background and experience as to what these things cost. And he said the approximate cost would be a fifty thousand dollar range for such a civil engineer to oversee the project. Now, that's really the bad news. The good news is that we received from Mr. Mays, from who is the current President of the Northeastern University, American Society of Civil Engineers, that he is ready, willing, and able to continue that which has already been done, which was to do the original concept design. And they're willing to step up from an engineering perspective to transfer and translate that concept design into construction drawings with the actual specifications and components of the design. That whole component of the budget is about a hundred thousand dollars. But fifty thousand of that was for engineering oversight. We believe that as long as we're patient and willing to wait until September of this year, that we'll get that gratis from Northeastern University. So that's wonderful news for us. In addition, there's the fabrication cost, while there'd be a design and fabrication cost. But we've done some, and I say we, Chase Berkeley was very helpful, Joe Sloan was very helpful from the neighborhood. And and we've actually solicited a preliminary bid from Raven Marine out of Kissimmee, Florida. And they think they can do the bridge for the approximate cost of sixty six thousand dollars. So if we get the design work for free and we get the bridge for sixty six thousand, we're ahead of the game. The third phase is actually to transport the prefabricated bridge to the site and install it suspended on about six, perhaps eight helical piles. And we're working on that. That is the mechanism by which we can reduce the disturbance to the the wetlands, the protected areas. So the whole project should be within our our design request for CPA funding of, we're asking for a hundred and twenty five thousand. The town meeting has already allocated one hundred thousand for a total budget of two twenty five. We think we can come in, wow, I'm gonna sound like an optimist, we think we can come in under budget. So what we're looking for is the support and endorsement from the Select Board. But I say that in this context, number one, we already have the town meeting voting affirmatively for designating a hundred thousand dollars for a DPW line item. Number two, today we received the support and endorsement from the Park and Recreation Department and the Park Commissioners. And they have endorsed it enthusiastically. We're asking that you also support us before the CPA. They've asked that that any support and endorsements come in to them by tomorrow. So I recognize this is last minute, but I do ask for your support for this. It's a wonderful public project that will enhance our natural resources. And and more importantly, it will provide for public access to the beautiful resources that we have. And so I I'll conclude by saying, please support this project, and if you could pass a resolution to support the project, then we would pass, we, the Conservation Commission, would then pass that on to the CPA Committee with with your full support. And I do so request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Can we assume that the proposed, the resolution that you're proposing is contained in the quotes that we have in our materials that you provided us, in that CPC would determine the financial allocations?
You are correct.
For project endorsement?
You are exactly correct, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chair Cannon. I've listened to you speak many times, and being very familiar with the site, a couple of points. One, you're having a very hard time shielding your enthusiasm for this project tonight. I understand, and I understand that. A little historical fact that a lot of people don't remember is that initial bridge was actually vandalized and burned to the ground about fifteen years ago, when Northeastern came back and helped to make sure that that bridge was rebuilt to the the functional a functional way that it sits today. Just one final point, Mr. Chair, if I can, there was a follow the CPA projects very closely this year. There was, there was a, not even though it's not part of this grant, there is a secondary, another project that has been proposed by the Parks Commissioners to build a playground, which would be, and John, you can tell me where I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with this. There's a name for, I call it the park that's at the corner of Canton Ave and Craig Street. I know it actually has a name.
Everly.
Yeah, and they want to make that a functional playground for that neighborhood. And if anyone understands the geographical lay layout of playgrounds in Milton, that west side of town has the least. Matter of fact, I don't think there's anything on the west side of Kent, Blue Hills Parkway, other than the the field that Mr. Fodley willed about ten years ago to the town from the old Combin Salonary. So this bridge will not only connect the three hundred and sixty degree circumference of walking, it will also gain access from people from all those neighborhoods, both sides of the parkway, to have the access to that new park. And I think that the two of those, as you eloquently described, John, will really enhance that neighborhood. And given that, for the purpose of discussion, I'm gonna propose a motion that we support the Conservation Commission's request for the Select Board to, whether it's a resolution, however we wrote it, support this project before the CPA.
So, Mr. Wells, you're supporting the, as a resolution, the wording proposed by Mr. Cannon, in quotes, in the materials in the
Absolutely. That was, if that's okay, if if that's fine with with Chair Cannon, then that would be my motion.
Oh, it's perfect. And and if I could just add to the record, at our last Conservation Commission meeting last week, we actually passed a resolution to support the Park Department in their application to build that Beverly Park Playground. So there's a lot of mutual support here. And also, for the record, there's a third component contemplated, and that is to to complete the pathway between where the bridge would go and the existing path, which would be another couple of hundred yards worth of path. But that would be our next CPA project. So we are trying to coordinate with all interested parties. And I know that the Friends of Pope's Pond, an organization headed by Joe Sloan, is very supportive. Joe Sloan himself has been extremely active in this, and he follows in the shoes of Will Brokoff, who started this and carried the ball for about ten years. And unfortunately, moved to Vermont, but he deserves a lot of credit along with Joe Sloan. And Chase Berkeley, by the way, they've been wonderful supporters of this.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Well, I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It has moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I support this project. I think it's a wonderful project. However, I'm 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 a little concerned, there's a lot that we don't know about what the CPC is considering and what's in the application. For example, I don't know what the ten percent, we don't have information telling us what the ten percent that is allocable to open space and recreation. Is this the entire ten percent? Is it a portion of the ten percent? Do they intend to put more than the ten percent? So so while I support the project, I'm a little concerned about our board putting our thumb on the scale with with respect to specific applications, because there are financial implications to that, right? And there's a lot that we don't know that the CPC is considering here. So so I would, I would favor supporting the project to construct the bridge, supporting, saying that, so to 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 take Mr. Mr. Cannon's words from his email, supporting the the Conservation Commission's project to construct a pedestrian bridge over Pine Tree Brook at at the inlet of Pope's Pond, the Select Board's support is premised on the basis that the project will enhance the town's natural resources, et cetera, et cetera. And then deleting the last sentence, which presumes to, you know, presumes to tell the the CPC what the what their mandate is, which I think goes beyond really what we should do. So so I do support the project. I'm just a little concerned about, you know, which projects we're gonna put our thumb on the scale on, and what what are the financial implications of that. So maybe I'm a little off base, and please tell me if I am, but that's my concern.
And just for everybody's information, I'll read that last sentence, Mr. Zulus. These goals are consistent with the statutory mandate of the CPA Committee. So, Mr. Cannon, with the removal of that sentence, otherwise provide you with the endorsement that you are seeking?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Would you accommodate that in your motion?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And Ms. Musto, in the second, you would as well accommodate that?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Well, I also had, Mr. Chair, the 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 revision to the first sentence. Rather rather than endorsing the application, which sets forth the monetary amount, saying that we we support the ConCom's project to construct, so I would, I would delete endorsing the application by the ConCom to the CPA Committee for Funding and say, we support the ConCom's project to construct. Again, the reasoning being, the application includes the amount, and I'm sorry to be, I'm just concerned, John, that we're gonna get a lot of these requests, and 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 we're gonna have to figure out, well, now have we gone over the amount? Are we behind in the, what's the amount? There's a lot of information we don't know if we get, if we put our thumb on the scale with respect to specific applications.
So let me try this. What Mr. Zulus has recommended, if I have it correct, Mike, is the Select Board endorses the Conservation Commission.
Project to construct. So you 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 take out the application and just say, and instead of the application by the Conservation Commission to the CPA for funding, say, we endorse the the Conservation Commission's project to construct the pedestrian bridge.
Mr. Cannon?
That's acceptable indeed.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
It's fine with me.
And Ms. Musto?
Absolutely fine.
Thank you. That will be helpful to everybody, I'm sure, and let me see if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Cannon, very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Thank you all. That's that's very helpful to us, and hopefully we'll get this done.
Just one last thing. John, you said this has to be received by the Chair of the CPC tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will make sure that that revised motion is to the Chair tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us now move, if we can, under the same agenda item to the letter proposed by the Forbes House Museum. The Ms. Mill offered the Select Board the opportunity to make modifications in it. We had, I had a conversation with the Executive Director, Heidi Vaughn, yesterday. And similar to what you just went through, as an exercise, we made a suggestion for the wording in the very last phrase of the letter that you have before you, which Mr. Milano originally ran something along the lines of supporting the recommendation for full funding. So this would be an endorsement of, and Mike, going along with what you mentioned earlier, we would, are you suggesting, would you suggest that we move the word "application"?
Yeah, I mean, you know, John, thank you, Mr. Chair. John mentioned, John Cannon mentioned, mentioned the amount on the, that was the subject of the application for the for the Pope's Pond Bridge. Do we know that what the amount, have we seen anything? Is there any document that tells us what the amount that this application is for?
We we saw that when Mr. Labash made a presentation to the Select Board, probably about a month ago. I don't have that.
I believe.
Go ahead, Mr. Wells.
I believe to Mr. Zulus's question, if my memory is correct, I believe it was the largest request, I believe it's two point two million. Unless it's been, unless, I've seen nothing that modified it since that last presentation, but it, it was the largest request made of the CPA for this round of funding of both private projects and town, town projects.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what, oh, pardon me. I don't mean to jump in.
That's okay. I understand. Mr. Wells, do you have further comment on this?
I just do, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I do want to mention, and I know this is the first year, and I know that any entity is, can apply, is Mr. Zulus can remember from the effort, and you as well, Mr. Chair, from, and even Roxanne, who's been around years ago. You know, this was a fight that the town tried years ago and lost, and it took an amazing effort last year to get this done. There are a lot of town projects that are in there. One significant one that has been omitted already, which was part of the reason, and a great deal of, as Mr. Zulus knows very well, the campaign to pass CPA legislation for Milton, was the fire station, was the fire station projects. One of the reasons that I voted for this previous project, my support was so strong is that that initial $100,000 town meeting article was our, was an article that was fostered and created by the select board and passed by the town meeting. And it was obviously a project even before we had CPA, that the select board had a vested interest in for the betterment of the community. As, as, so that's, that's my difficulty here is this is the largest project in its faring nonprofit. As I said, even though nonprofits can apply, there, there would be many town-related projects that would potentially be cut out similar to the fire stations if we were able to support this in this year.
And they did, thank you, Mr. Wells, just underscoring that a specific dollar amount was not requested. Mr. Milano, do you have the, the wording that we looked at first available to you?
I can pull it up.
Thank you.
Give me one moment.
I think it is just that last phrase.
Mr. Chair, you were correct. It just said full, full funding. It did not reference an amount. And, and I know at one point, the information at the CPC I shared was that the total project cost for this project was 2 million and that the request for CPA funding was 1 million. You know, applications were due in the last few weeks, so I don't know if, I don't have the latest exact request, but that was based on the October information that was shared by CPC.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Zulus, and then Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, we don't know things we probably should know before signing on to this. If indeed, it is a request for 1 million or 2.2 million, my guess is that it would crowd out any other request of the, of the historical preservation bucket. And not knowing what the other applications are, not having that information readily available, I would just be concerned that we would, we would be endorsing the crowding out of any other project for historical, for historical preservation.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. And, Mr. Milano, by chance, do you have access to the CPC frame that listed the projects that they were considering so that we can see whether or not there was any other project that would fit the historical category?
Mr. Chair, I can answer that for you. That's why I have my hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. You're recognized.
Thank you. So the, and we purposely, our committee purposely did not submit asking for support. The Milton Yard Club Building, which is, if not the oldest, the second oldest facility in town, is also an application. Given that both Ms. Musto and I sit on the landing committee, I just felt this chair was not appropriate to ask this board to, to support it. So we got the, we've just let the application go forward on its merits. And to Mr. Zulus's point, it, it is a $2 million request. It was a million this year and a million next year. So it'd be a million for the first year and a million for the second year on the Forbes House. I don't think you could get 2 million. There wasn't 2 million to be had in the first year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. What is the pleasure of the board? Yes, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't there for the presentation that Mr. Lavash gave for the committee. But I will say that this sounds more like a earmark in the state budget for our state, our legislative delegations to try and get some money for the Forbes House. It does bring a lot, not only to our community, but to the surrounding communities. And it could be a point of tourism that we could probably put in under the Tourism Committee in the budget, which might be a new idea. I don't know if they've tried that before. But I think that personally, I would like to see this have, have weight on our delegation more so than the, the money that we're talking about this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any further comment? Yes, Ms. Musto.
Um, just a. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a general comment. When we have all of these proposals coming to us, it's sort of difficult, because it almost feels like everybody's sort of running around and jockeying for these support letters and so forth. Sort of reminds me of a, a show on TV called The Amazing Race, that my niece actually was on, where you're running around, you, you're trying to beat out these other teams and sort of chaotic. So I guess it's just a general thing I want to say is that it seems a little strange that, you know, we have a committee that's supposed to be making these decisions, yet all of the different committees in town and boards are being asked to weigh in on all of these proposals. And I think it sort of makes it a little bit unfair, because, you know, you know, would one committee's opinion have more weight than another? Or one board's, you know, opinion have more weight than another? I just think it's sort of a little crazy, you know? It's a little chaotic when we, we're doing this, you know, with all of the different proposals. That's what we have that committee to do, is to vet all of these proposals and figure out these decisions. And, and so I just wanted to make that comment, that it's sort of crazy, you know? I feel like everybody's sort of scrambling around and running around to get these endorsements. So just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. That's appreciated. Well taken, Mr. Wells, and then Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, the good news is everything's due by tomorrow. So if, if another applicant is looking to come to before this board, whether they'll pass the deadline, I think perhaps maybe the, the prudent thing for us to do at this time is just to take no action on this application. Again, going back to my previous comments, part of my strong support for Mr. Chair Cannon's application was the history of it and the fact that the initial $100,000 request was a project that was initiated, passed, put forward, and subsequently passed a town meeting. And we were the, we were the originers or the creators of that. So this is my thought, I think, that perhaps if you wanted to form a motion, I will. I just make a motion.
That would be in order, Mr. Wells.
I'll make a motion that we either table or, actually, I think I'll take a motion that we take no action on that, this application at this time, if that would be acceptable to you.
Mr. Zulus, and then Ms. Bradley.
Mr. Chair, I think we can just take no action. I don't think we need a motion to take no action. I think we can just take no action on it. And if, if, if I could take the flow beyond that, I would, I would say that, you know, I agree with Richard. We can distinguish what we finally offered for the Conservation Commission, which was no different from what we offered last spring, when we sought the funding, which was we support the project. Right? This is something different. And, and, and while Richard's right that we're not going to get flooded with requests between now and tomorrow, we may indeed get flooded with requests next year if we go about doing this. And I think Roxanne is right, that the CPC is the statutorily mandated committee that's supposed to decide these things. And they are delegated that decision. It seems to me that, you know, for us to supplant that decision-making or to, again, put our thumbs on the scale is, I think we should, I think we should be very cautious and very hesitant about doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. And you and Ms. Ms. Bradley, are you concurring that?
I'm concurring.
I need a motion for no action. No, we.
No action. But I also concur with what Ms. Musto said. I mean, we don't know what the scope of this is, and this could just open a floodgate of everybody coming to us next year, the year after. And, and she's 100% right. We already have a committee that's supposed to do this. So, yes, I concur with my fellow select board members.
Okay. I think we're all in agreement, unless I hear otherwise on this.
I think I have to, I think I have to remove this. I think I need to remove my motion, Mr. Chair, then. I'm going to withdraw my motion.
It was the second, and so.
Okay, that's okay. Very good.
Yeah. I wanted to go back to the recommendation that Roxanne made, and I heard others voicing parallelism with, and ask whether or not you thought it might be advisable for the select board to communicate with the Chair of the CPC to the effect that this is a process that might be reviewed in such a way that we avoid unintended consequences with recommendations or something along those lines, so that the Chair has a sense of where we are for the conversation of a few minutes ago. What, what's your thinking on that?
I think it's important. Sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's important to, you know, have a conversation with the Chair, just find out what the, you know, obviously, they have a process in place. Do they have enough people on the committee? Are they looking for more people on the committee? Do they want input from residents to send letters of support on certain projects? That type of thing. But I, because it's for the community, all of these projects. So when I see different things, you know, different committees and, and different boards weighing in, it just, it's hard, because, you know, there's so much merit, a lot of great projects. There are a lot of really good projects and hard to make these decisions, right? So there's got to be some kind of process, I guess, in how this is done, so that it's equitable and fair for everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. And go to Mr. Wells, and then to Mr. Zulus. Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to everyone's points, I agree. You know, we are in our infancy of this. This is our first year in CPA. This is baby steps. I think it's more than prudent that, I think we, maybe you can convey to, you can have a side discussion with their Chair, Mr. Chair, and then let's see how this plays out. I, I, as I say, I don't think we're going to have anyone else coming to us. Tomorrow's the deadline. And then, as we have next year, working into next year to look at this, and because this is going to be something that's going with us for a long time, that we make a determination on how we, because it is very possible that this board, because I'm thinking, you know, should we take a motion tonight that we don't? But it's very possible that this board, just as we, you know, were the creators of the Post Pond Bridge project before town meeting, before CPA, we may potentially have a project before CPA that we want to submit one day. So I think we need to take all the time and think about this going forward and, and file this away for tonight in, in our collective knowledge and work this out as we move for, into the future of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It makes perfect sense for the park commission, park commissioners to weigh in in favor of park projects. It makes perfect sense for the Affordable Housing Trust to weigh in in favor of affordable housing projects. We're something different. We're the select board, we're the executive authority of the town, and we're, we're charged with overseeing all of it. Right? And so to the extent that we put our thumb on the scale on one way or the other, it excludes other things. So I don't, I, I think it's fine to, to discuss the process with the, with the, with the Chair of the CPC. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we should adopt some kind of policy or some kind of vote that we won't do this, because, you know, we, we can't bind future boards. They may have a different view. Right? And as, as was pointed out by Richard, there may be other projects that, that this board has supported through seeking funding requests. So, you know, I, I, I think by our actions, we will probably get the result of, of, of people not coming to us if we just say, look, and, and if we don't take action on them, that will probably diminish people from coming to us for it. But, but I, I think it's entirely appropriate that we, we don't take action on a, on a, on a question like this.
Okay, thank you. And there was no sense of a, a motion or a policy, but merely a conversation based on this experience. Mr. Wells, again, just to the raise, did you want to speak further on this point?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
No, no apology necessary. Thank you. We move on to item number seven. Discussion Draft Letter to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership Regarding Responses to Questions for Development of a Request for Proposals for Milton's Town Farm. Mr. Milano, can we turn to you for this, please?
Sure. Last week, at the Governor Stoughton Trustees' Discussion, Tom Callahan and Julie Kramer had a conversation about this letter to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So we had grabbed the questions from them, put them in your packet. We also put together the draft letter that they sent over in your packet, as was discussed at last week's meeting. We, we tried to get discussion going on the first review by the board of this letter at this stage. So I'm happy to take any comments that the board members might have now. Alternatively, feel free to send me your comments, and I can try to, to work them into a document to keep this moving forward over the next week or two.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Wells, you are recognized.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. I missed that, Mr. Wells? Are you muted?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I do not, I'm trying to bring my hand down. I don't have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments at this time from Mr. Milano? Was it the desire of members to reach out to him following the meeting? Ms. Musto, you're recognized?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up to see, did we actually take a vote to do that? I don't recall taking a vote that we were going to do this.
The, that specifically being?
To put together questions, to, to join, to look at the, the Governor Stoughton land with, with regards to affordable housing and the application with the Affordable Housing Trust. Did we vote that? I don't recall voting that.
Don't recall that there was a vote along those lines, Mr. Milano? Did you wish to comment?
No, and if I overextended myself, then I apologize. I just, it seemed to me that the sense was that the board wanted to take a look at the letter and see if it wanted to send this letter and provide comments, you know, to work on this letter, to move through this questionnaire process with Mass Housing Partnership in order to see if an RFP is something that we want to look at for this site.
Mr. Zulus?
You can certainly go back and check the tape. I thought the, my, my memory is that the Chair thought there was a consensus, at least to put together a draft to consider.
There was a consensus, but no vote. That's correct. And we had another series of questions that had been set before us that we've seen as well. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Just a, a couple of comments. One is that if we go ahead and go forward with this type of thing where we're asking these kinds of questions and so forth, I think the appearance is that this is the way that we want to go on with this land. And I think we have to be aware of the will and the trust, and that we're trustees for the benefit of the poor of Milton. So I'd like to understand from all of you how, you know, I, I listened to the presentation. So I'd like to understand from all of you how, you know, I, I listened to the presentation that was before us explaining affordable housing and, you know, the 80% and, you know. Yep, and the 70/30 split in terms of Milton residents would maximum amount would be for 70%. So I don't know how this fits in and I don't think it fits into the poor of Milton. So if we're looking at something for this particular site with regards to these questions, that's concerning. If we're looking at something for affordable housing in the town of Milton, that's a different thing and I would support that. I'm not sure that I would support anything with the Governor Stoughton Trust. We're still, I'm still learning more about it. And according to everything that I've read in all the documentation, I don't understand, don't, I shouldn't say don't understand. It doesn't seem like it meets the, the will and for the, for the poor of Milton, for the benefit of the poor of Milton.
Thank you, Ms. Vesto, Mr. Zulus.
So, so just to reiterate from the discussion of the Governor Stoughton Trustees' last week, this is an opportunity to respond to questions from the Mass Housing Partnership so that they would draft an RFP for us to look at, to see if it fit with the definition for the poor of Milton, to see if it was something that we could pursue for affordable housing. It doesn't bind us to anything. All it does is to allow us to get the free assistance from the Mass Housing Partnership to have something to look at, a draft to look at, to see how that would look. So this doesn't bind us to anything, it makes no commitments. All it does is, and as the letter points out, our intention is use it to use this for the poor of Milton, right? Now, if, if there are specific things that we want to massage in terms of answering the questions or changes we want to make, we can do that. But I think it would be an opportunity lost for this board and for this town if we don't at the very least just answer the questions, get a draft RFP that we can look at to see if it makes sense to try to get affordable housing in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with both of them. I agree. You know, Roxanne, and I can understand, I mean, I've probably got 15 years in rest in the government of Stoughton and I still don't understand it all the time today. So, and I agree with Mr. Zulus. I, I think we need to explore this, find out what is acceptable, what's not. So I, we did not take a vote, but I'm fine with it. And I'm, I look forward to seeing it and hearing any comments that I might have.
My sense of, of discussion is we wanted to keep our options open. And this afforded us the opportunity to have information on which we can later then make an informed decision. Is that a fair recollection? It's not the exact wording, but it was the sense of direction that I had.
I agree, yes.
So going back to Mr. Milano's invitation, if we don't have specific comments at this time, he would like us to diligently review the document and get back to him with our individual suggestions and then he can bring the compilation of that back to the table. Great, okay. At this time, we'll move on to item number eight, which is a committee appointment. As we all know from our past experience, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee has a member of the planning board on it. And the planning board has put forward the name of Meredith Hall as chair to be the planning board representative on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. And there is a motion proposed to that effect.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Meredith Hall to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Vesto.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number nine, discussion approval, one day local license for a sells museum, February 9th, 2023. Appreciation event for members and their friends.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve a one day local license before his house museum. Did you say February 9th? What was the date?
February 9th, 2023.
For the fundraiser is articulated on our agenda.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Mr. Milano, could we turn to you, please, for the town administrator's report?
Sure. As I mentioned at our last meeting, nomination papers for our town offices and town meeting members are now available. The last day for incumbent town meeting members to file their written acceptance with the town clerk is Tuesday, February 28th. The last day to file nomination papers is Tuesday, March 7th. The annual town election is Tuesday, April 25th. I also wanted to make a comment about the Fontbon Academy project, our attempt or efforts to purchase property at Fontbon. I know it was discussed by the school building committee last night. So just for background and a status update for those who are listening, on December 20th, the congregation of Sisters of St. Joseph submitted a proposal with conditions for the, to the town to purchase the property and building at 444 Cent Street, which is a portion of the property that contains the Fontbon Convent. The school building committee immediately began reviewing the land and building for feasibility for an early education center. And the select board at that time entered negotiations with the sisters regarding the purchase price and their proposed conditions. The conditions included their Fontbons continued use of space in the building for up to six years and their use of fields adjacent to the building in perpetuity. On Friday, this past Friday, January 20th, the sisters, the broker representing the sisters informed us the town that they were withdrawing from negotiations for the purchase due to their continuing need to use the space in the convent building and the adjacent fields. It's anticipated that at the special town meeting on February 13th, the select board would request that the warrant article relates to the purchase of this property be referred back to the select board unless the sisters do seek to reopen negotiations with us and that the town and the sisters reach an agreement. So just so folks understood where, where that effort is, I wanted to provide that update to everybody. So that's it, Mr. Chair, for me.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. The chair has now reported this time and we have no public comment responses from the chair, but they are invited for members of the select board. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just with respect to Dr. Donahue's public comment, I believe we do have being, being considered for the select board, the Galrode articles for the May town meeting. So he was, he was concerned that we have those articles are ready to go. I know the school building committee is moving forward with them and is requesting that the select board do that as well.
Thank you, and also acknowledging your service as the select board representative to the school building committee. Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize the information that Mr. Fahey provided us tonight and look forward to seeing those numbers and things as we contemplate the MBTA zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. The following item is future meeting dates. We'll note those as Tuesday, February 7th, 2023 accord, and Monday, February 13th, and Tuesday, February 21st. So we'll have those on our calendar. And at this time, as mentioned earlier, I would invite the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee to join and to have its chair, Katie Conlin, open their meeting. So could we promote Miss Conlin and the members of her committee, Andy Schmidt? I think we have Raj is with us. Chris. And Katie. For this evening, correct, Katie?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So it looks like we have the full membership of our committee. So we would just need to call to order our meeting, Mr. Chair.
Please do so.
If we can do that now, okay. So, so I will call to order the meeting of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee at 8:52 PM on January 24th, 2023. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee is appointed by the select board and serves as an advisory board to, an advisory committee to the board on airplane related issues. And we were invited by the chair to join your meeting this evening to meet in a joint executive session. This meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the order signed by the governor on July 16th, 2022. So all votes would be by roll call. My name is Katie Conlin, I'm the chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. And if we could introduce our other members.
Raj Pathak.
Chris Hart.
Andy Schmidt.
Thank you, everyone. And Raj, we're getting a little background from your, from your feed.
You know what? Off and go to my home office and come back in, okay?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And you'll be convening your committee into executive session, will you not?
Yes, should we follow you or would you like us to go first?
I'd like to ask if you would precede us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Then I will move that we, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to litigation filed by the town of Milton against the Federal Aviation Administration, case number 22-152, pending in the US Court of Appeals for the First Circuit. Based on my belief that having discussion of this matter in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board to which the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee serves as an advisory committee. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee will not return to open session and would adjourn from the executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schmidt and roll call, Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
And I don't see Mr. Pathak back in the meeting yet, and I will vote yes.
Ms. Bradley, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to know if either you or Chair, Chairwoman Conlin, I guess, would like to have Karis North join us in here? She's in the panelists, our attorney.
She would be invited into the executive session.
I, I just don't want to lose her if we're gonna, if we're gonna.
That, that won't happen. And I don't think there's any difficulty inviting her now rather than after we're in executive session. So please, let's promote Karis, here she is, thank you. She was not forgotten. At this time, on behalf of the select board, I will make three consecutive motions, each one of which will need to roll call vote. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property located at 930 Brook Road, Fontbon Convent, Sisters of St. Joseph. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. And for this and the other two motions, the select board will adjourn from executive session.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. A second motion. I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to litigation filed by the town of Milton versus the Federal Aviation Administration, number 22-152, US Court of Appeals for Circuit, based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And third and last motion, I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority MBTA related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Massachusetts, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. And again, the select board will not enter into open session. It will adjourn this meeting from executive session. And at this time, we would invite anybody identified as an attendee or panelist to leave the meeting they have left. And M A T V can now stop the recording.